September 20th, meeting of the Planning Commission. Fellow commissioners, the first item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda. You'll note that one item that was originally posted under new business, that is specially used 170801 for the Sprint LLC fourth term, has been removed from the agenda due to some issues with the notice and some questions about the kind of ownership information on the application itself. So, that has been pulled from the amendment. Are there any other suggestions or changes to the agenda?
On the new business, when we get to it, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add two things. Number one, discuss the proposed BCA appointment to the Planning Commission for 2018, and the other items that should be discussed briefly, the planning plans.
Sorry, what's the second one? I have something I have to copy at this point.
Is that an update?
Just a little general discussion.
I'm going to take that in the form of a motion, is there anybody, is there anybody seconding those items?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Sure.
With respect to the plan, if I have a copy, I mean, are we going to be, is the idea to go through it, or just to?
Just, I think we just need to get some direction. We haven't mentioned the plan in the last two or three meetings, and it just seems like it keeps on getting forgotten, put off, and it's getting to be quite old now, and we need to talk about getting refocused on that.
And I think Chapter 6 is to the supervisors and their remiss also, the remiss in not having focused on that. I actually ask that that be put on the October 2nd agenda for the BOS.
Okay. Any other discussion? It sounds like the motion is to just sort of talk about it and kind of get a line on the plan for the planning, correct? All in favor of the amended agenda? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, then we'll adopt the agenda. The next item on the agenda is to review the minutes from our August 16th meeting. I noted there was one minor matter on the, over the last vote, where there were two abstentions, the cow was listed as three to two, probably should be three to zero, with two abstaining. Any other comments or corrections to the minutes from last month? Do people have, have people had a chance to review them?
They've got a copy.
I think they were on.
Were they on board docs?
I think, I think here's something we need to talk about there, too. You know, we've gone through a number of changes here, and several board members, they've always received their documentation for the meetings through the mail, and through the changes, and everything, you know. Some of the procedures that we had followed for years and years got lost, and I think, like Mr. Brown, he's one person who always got his mail, I just know that one, and that 's got forgotten, we need to get back in track, a couple of things like that.
Yeah, I might suggest perhaps Mr. Brown have a separate conversation with Mr. Dan Rind and make that arrangement, if there were needs, the need there. Any other comments on the, on the minutes for tonight? Not, I entertain a motion to approve them as amended.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. At this time, I will open the public comment period. Because we don't have any specific applications, we don't have a very large crowd tonight, and frankly, because several of our items of new business and old business are somewhat related, I think I'm just going to have, suggest one comment period this evening. So, if you have any comment in general, or about any of the specific items on our agenda this evening, you're welcome to make those comments during this one and only public comment meeting for this evening. Please, if you want any comments, take your name and address, and try to keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Phil Flinfield. I would like to invite all of the members of the Planning Commission, everybody in the community as a matter of fact, to the Farm Tour, which is coming up for the ninth annual event. The eleven farms opened in the public in Rappahannock County, and I would like to invite all of you to join us. If you would like to have information all the way from lavender to lamas, to various agricultural products, as you know, agriculture and tourism are our big things in Rappahannock. And I think you'll find it an educational experience, a little fun. Delighted to meet you, and once again, welcome to the Farm Tour, this Saturday and Sunday, 10 until 5. All of your favorites.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment this evening?
Yes, ma'am. Yo Kowarski, Hampton District. Will you be having a public comment for each section of the proposed amendments later?
No.
Or you will not?
This is it.
Okay, one thing I do not see on the proposed thing is that definition of bed and breakfast and the tourist home are very, very similar, and no distinctions there. And actually, I have emailed all of you a couple times about that, that bed and breakfast actually serves breakfast. Tourist homes do not. Bed and breakfast has onsite managers, either owner or hired manager. That is not stated here as distinction, and I feel that's important to distinguish these two. Otherwise, why do you distinct them all? You know, why do you make the difference? I know you talked about it in one of the meetings, but it's not reflected in here. And one other thing, was that the Airbnb is not addressed, and how this registration of all these accommodations will be registered in this county. That is not addressed either, unless you have some other plans to do it, and I'd like to know about those. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
John Nash with Hampton District. I'd like to know if the Planning Commission has run into the issue of hunters' BNB, BNB R., where hunters from all over the country can sign up and go hunting on various properties. I had a, I had a guy in suburban with guns all over the place, and fishing rods sticking out of his suburban, that entered my property, an adjoining property, the Whipporwill property. And I went out and saw him, and asked him what the hell he was doing, and he said, "Oh, I'm just, I'm from Ammondale, and we're going to be hunting out here, and I like to, I can look at my firing lines and stuff like that, and I want to know what the county is doing about that, and if it is, what are the rules and regulations that private property owners can have while, you know, have other people respect our private property?" We went on to the Whipporwill estate today, and looked at, one of their deer blinds is 150 steps from our property line, where we walk dogs in the morning, and the night, and all during the day, all, you know, 156, I saw. And another one is about 200. And so, now they're putting these blinds, and someone is at the very extreme end of their property, which adjoins ours, and, and shooting our way. So, if someone would, the Planning Commission wouldn't let me know what my rights are, I know what I'll do if he comes back again, but I just want to know what, what, what the county's doing, if there's such a thing as BNB-R hunting rights, because that'll change. This guy didn't know the property lines, he didn't know anything, and he wasn't from this area. I love hunters, they can do it all they want. The last time I went hunting was in Vietnam. But I, I, I don't hunt anymore, but I do respect hunters, and I respect owners of property to be able to have hunting on their property. But I want to make sure that we have some sort of way of coordinating, you understand?
Can I ask you to just clarify, if you would? I'm not familiar with, you're referring to BNB-R? Is that a, is that a commercial entity, or a website?
You've never heard of BNB-R?
No.
No.
No, no, that's a, well, it's a state law that's been passed, it's been brought up in the Planning Commission meetings, Board of Supervisors meetings, BCA meetings, and I've been working for two years.
I'm just not familiar with that nickname, sir. Are you referring to the legislation?
BNB-R, yeah.
Thank you. Which has nothing to do with hunting, right?
What?
Which has nothing to do with hunting, as I understand it, BNB-R.
No, I know, I heard tonight, for the first time, that it may, that they're actually, they're actually looking at, at, doing the BNB-R hunting kind of thing.
Shed a little light on this. This chairman's come up in a supervisory meeting, brought to attention, if you look at the Cooperative, it's called Cooperative Living, it's the Rappahannock Electric Co-op Monthly Magazine. If you look in, I can't remember if it's the inside front cover or the back cover, there is actually a, an organization, not online, an Airbnb, where if I have a property, and I want to put it on my, on that website, and offer it to out-of-community hunters to come in, they rent it just like a BNB. They will pay a certain amount of money, and for a certain period of time, and it's, I'm told, and I have not confirmed this, that there's nothing, nobody has signed, there's no property in Rappahannock that's registered on its site. Some citizens have said they've gone to the site and looked for properties in Rappahannock, and they haven't found any yet. But I think Mr. Nash is maybe making a reference to that. Certainly, you have the right, you know, you can give somebody the right to hunt on your property, we're all very familiar with that, but this is actually more in the, in commercial.
John, I don't know if this guy was involved in that.
Yeah.
All I know is, I hunt up here with Brad and whatever, but I don't think Brad owns the Whipporwill LLC, and that's, that's all I'm saying. I just want to know what our property rights are, in regard to that.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Yes.
I'd like to follow through on that, there's hunting.
And would you mind, your name is?
Jennifer Alexander, I live in One Health.
Sorry, go ahead.
I guess my question's to follow up for both of you is, hunting, I believe, would be considered agricultural use of your land, and I believe there's some fair amount of people who rent out, lease out their farm properties as an income producer to people who want. That's been going on since I moved here 30 years ago, and the only way I know that you can semi-protect yourself is put in a hunting sign on your side, maybe a large one. But I believe, I believe it's legal, there's a lot of it, it certainly is in our district, and it's not new, and it's not just friends, this is money changing hands. Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't Big Woods Hunt Club on leased land for the last 18 decades? Yeah, okay, as an example, you may want to check with them, how they make sure it stays safe. There's no overnight accommodations within it, at least I know, but certainly, you do want people to know how far they're going to shoot. And along the same line, with BNBs, no matter what they tell people they can do on the property, whether it's hiking, fishing, hunting, I would say that instructing people, the visitors, where the property lines are, does seem to be a recurring problem in our property laws. I address it with them individually. Sometimes that involves calling the sheriff's department to get people off mine, because they don't believe me about what I am, but good luck.
I don't call the government. But I agree with you.
I agree with you.
I wasn't sure.
Public comments, if you would mind addressing their comments to the commission.
Okay. The second part of my comment had to do with the proposed amendments, I guess they are, that you read.
The proposed zoning ordinance.
Proposed zoning.
Ordinance.
Ordinance changes. What would you think about a request to not vote on those until they've had time to be in the paper for a month?
Just to be clear, the action before us tonight is to discuss having, scheduling a hearing on those proposed amendments. We will not be acting on this.
I'm glad to hear that, I didn't have you jump out, so.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
First of all, the website that he's referring to is called Outdoor Access, and it's on the front, inside front cover of Rappahannock. Page 10, Jackson District. Good evening. I'd like to welcome Holly to the Planning Commission, and look forward to her expertise being applied to the county zoning issues. First, I want to address the comprehensive plan, and thank you, Al, for getting it on the agenda today, well, well needed. The comprehensive plan is years overdue, over two, five-year cycles. The Virginia Code 15-2, 22, 23, and 22, 24 required analyses and studies have not been started, more or less completed. Meanwhile, it appears the county is not achieving the goals in the plan. You and others have stated that you believe the plan is good, and has served the county well. Where is the data to support your case? Let me be clear, I support the goals, principles, and policies in the plan, but from a results standpoint, it is hard to see where the plan has produced the desired results. Farmland is being subdivided into weekend and retirement villas. Residences are being built on hilltops impacting the view shed. Elderly citizens on fixed incomes can't afford real estate tax increases. Those that don't qualify for land use pay a disproportionately higher amount of real estate tax. Lower-income and longtime residents are being pushed out of the county. The interests of current residents are being supplanted by the interests of non-residents. The county is rapidly becoming the Hamptons of the Piedmont. Those aren't the land use and taxation results envisioned in the comprehensive plan. I understand that you are not properly compensated for your time, and that doing this analysis is time-consuming. Simply expecting an overworked, overloaded county administrator or zoning administrator to do this work is unrealistic. You need to reach out to the numerous people that have asked for action on the issue, and volunteer their time and resources to do this assessment work. We need to know where we are, which direction we're headed, before we decide how to go forward. That brings me to tourist homes. The primary purpose of zoning is to balance the interest of landowners and neighbors. The current zoning ordinances and zoning decisions regarding tourist homes are creating significant controversy, you all put up with it all the time, in the county, because those interests are not in balance. The root issue of residency is not being addressed. In, in general, people don't seem to have a problem with tourist homes if the landowner is a resident on the property. The issue when the property is an investment, the issue is when the property is an investment being used for short-term rentals. I doubt any of you would buy property in Dupp North Carolina, primarily a tourist home community, and live there full-time. I wouldn't, all right? Again, that is not the land use envisioned in the comprehensive plan. Much has been said about the county revenue generated by tourist homes through the hospitality and sales taxes. The numbers do not back that up. All of the counties, all of the counties, meals and lodging and sales tax revenue combined, of which tourist homes is a very small part, is only 6% of the real estate tax revenue. There are currently 35 approved tourist homes, about 1% of the county residences, that generate less than $10,000 in revenue. If every county resident, residents became a tourist home, the county would gain 1/10 of the revenue of real estate taxes, assuming the market would support that, which I doubt it would, all right? The numbers just don't work for tourist homes providing significant revenue to the county. The limited revenue does not justify overlooking neighbors' concerns. I believe most taxpayers would prefer a small tax increase rather than becoming the Outer Banks or the Hamptons. You need to focus on the interests of the current residents, not the interests of non-residents. In addition to eliminating the conflicts in the tourist home zoning amendments that are before you today, I think you know what those conflicts are, I urge you to include a residency requirement on tourist homes, particularly in agricultural zones. I'm not saying to prohibit tourist homes that are investment opportunities, but they should be regulated similar to a hotel, which is more of a similar use than a residence. Thank you for your time and your prompt attention to these issues I've raised. As always, if there's anything I can do to help with these issues, just ask. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Chris Wood, Washington, Virginia. I just want to be clear, you guys are not voting on these proposed changes tonight, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
We will be discussing the, the prospect of publicizing a hearing and the justice associated with that moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, the prospect of?
Of publicizing a hearing at our next meeting.
Okay, so there's a possibility that you won't do that as well?
It's on the agenda tonight to be discussed, I don't want to prejudice, prejudge that discussion. The item to discuss is where we go with those amendments, and I believe the likely outcome is that we will agree in some manner to have a public hearing at our next meeting.
Wonderful. That lights on the record, and I support, I like that answer.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Reed Fulton, Hampton. The topic is water. About eight or 10 years ago, we had Tim Bumbler, who's a high schooler, come in and talk to leadership in the county. We were worried about water, and the things that Tim brought out to the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors are actually coming true. He was surprisingly accurate. It's not a very pleasant thought, it's a problem here, but at any rate, we might want to look at this again, and see the things we can do. And if we have the time, I would suggest that an ideal thing for the Planning Commission to do is take a good look at water.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? If not, we'll let the closed tonight's public comment period, and move on to old business. I had to resist the temptation to say gentleman, I just have to. I know I'm going to do it. Fellow commissioners, I think the first item tonight is, is the table that was referred to earlier, for the interest of the audience, and to refresh all our collective memories. We had a table of amendments that I believe originated with some proposals that Mr. Conick had, had submitted. Over the course of several months of meetings, with a few interruptions, we have gone through and discussed and voted on each one of those, and the results of that review are reflected in the, in the table that I believe is, is part of the packet on board docs tonight. So, I believe the question before us this evening, although I'm open enough for discussion, certainly, and open to other suggestions, but I believe the matter before us tonight is, is where to go next with these. I have to say, from my own part, it wasn't clear to me that the next step would be for us to schedule a public hearing, but I gather that in fact, that is the, the correct next step for these, for these amendments. So, I believe that the discussion tonight should be around whether and how and when, and any other issues associated with scheduling a hearing on these proposed amendments. So, with that, I would certainly ask my fellow commissioners if anyone would like to talk about that. Mr. Burr?
I think that this, as many people have said, is past due, and that I think that in planning when, where, and how to do it, we ought to try to fit into the Board of Supervisors' schedule so that the results of our meeting can be substantive and functional for the supervisor's meeting which follows.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Pretty much it.
Mr. Brown, would you like to?
No, probably not.
Mr. Lazinski?
No, just that I echo your, I'm feeling that your recommendation is solid, in that these have been looked at with great care by the Planning Commission over an extended period of time, both with Mr. Frazier and myself sitting here, and actually, not to jump ahead, but with respect to the next agenda item probably sinks in well with, with the timing of that discussion, of that resolution. So, yeah, I would, I would be supportive of just moving this on to a public hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Mead, I know you weren't here for most of that, but do you have any questions or commentary on this?
I'm not done, I, I agree with the process you all laid out.
So, this is going to be a meeting that's going to be called by the Board of Supervisors, not the Planning Commission, correct?
I believe this is Planning Commission's public hearing.
Well, I think we should take a motion on it, but my, my thought is, and this is being driven largely by the more explicit directive in the, in the later item about the, you know, in the, in the resolution before us later, we've been directed to, to have a public hearing at our next meeting in October, and to me, it would be a logical suggestion, and I would be in motion eventually, I think, to propose that we have both of those, those items that have kind of converged on us here advertised and discussed at a public hearing at our October meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Henry's point, there was, I think, some confusion at the Board of Supervisors level as to why this was coming back to the Planning Commission, given that it had just been sent by the Planning Commission to the Board. But we had Mr. Goff in our meeting, and then Mr. Dan Rind weighed in as well, and I guess it's procedural that this come back to the Planning Commission, and if it's so, you know, so decided that it's the Planning Commission's public hearing in which these would be considered. But we deferred to Mr. Goff and Mr. Dan Rind's recommendation on that, and sent it back to Planning Commission. I don't know if that clears anything out, just.
Anything else? So, it sounds like there's general agreement, I would entertain a motion, I believe the matter before us is to, is whether we would like to direct the zoning administrator to proceed with noticing, providing notice and comment, and scheduling the public hearing on that item of amendments that are up for the meeting. Get such a motion.
Well, just, just maybe in case there's some logistical problems, can we just hold off on that and discuss on the new business, the zoning, the amendments, the taxes, maybe approve both at the same time, just to see if there's any issues there about them going together?
I don't have any problem with that.
Too bad it's official for the supervisors to send down, you know, what they sent to us, and the format they sent to us. So, we're going to talk about that, and then both, I assume it's going to be a joint, I think we're going to have a public hearing for both, for hiring, at the same time, at the same night, is that right?
Yes.
That's right. I think, given that I don't, it's not clear at this point that they are compatible with one another, I think it behooves us to have the hearing together so that we can work that out at one point. work that out at one point, rather than discuss one set at one meeting and the other at a different meeting. So even though I think that could be a confusing prospect, I think it's pretty much the only path.
I think David will enjoy working on this.
We're already scheduled, Mr. Goff.
But I don't, you know, as to your suggestion to hold off on the vote, you know, you're taxing my meeting leadership skills here a bit, but we can come back to the vote if you prefer. Is that the sentiment of the commission, or would you rather?
I see no problem with that.
Okay. So let's just hold on that item, and if I may, move us forward to our new business, the item two, the proposed zoning amendments from September 2017. This being the resolution passed by the Board of Supervisors with a variety of changes most related to the distinction between a special permit and a special exception and proposing to eliminate that distinction, which to me is not a matter of, you know, really a matter for the planning commission to decide, but in having read the resolution more closely, I do believe there are some procedural matters in there, and there are some additional items embedded in those changes that are, I believe, more relevant to our discussion. And be that as it may, the resolution directs us to conduct a public hearing on the matter. So, and if you look at the resolution itself, it actually specifies that we schedule this hearing and notify for this hearing at our October, I believe it's 16th, meeting, our regular meeting in October. So as has already been discussed, it seems to me that if we're going to have a hearing on proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, even though it might be a little confusing since there's two sets of them floating around, that I guess my inclination would be to have a single hearing for both sets of amendments. But why don't we sort of start with that, or any other concerns or issues that any commissioners would like to start with? Mr. Henry, do you want to pick up on that?
I guess two things, is I understand that the whole purpose, well, not the whole purpose, but the majority of the purpose of this is to eliminate the BZA and the decision process here and the chain of events here.
Well, Henry, maybe I can give a little background, because this originated from the supervisory meeting, and it was actually something that, again, Mr. Goff and Mr. Dameron had brought to the attention of the board for multiple reasons. I think primarily to simplify the process, I think there's been a lot of confusion in the community about whether or not an application is destined to be a special use permit or a special exception, and when that, where that particular application will be heard once the planning commission makes its recommendation. Also was presented by Mr. Dameron and Mr. Goff. It represents, having that distinction between a special exception and a special use permit creates an additional burden on staff to distinguish between the two, and so it would help streamline staff work, and Mr. Dameron wants to comment on that when I'm finished. I welcome his thoughts. There was also a feeling, and this came more from Mr. Goff, that the people did not have an opportunity to necessarily, and I hate to use the word recourse, because that's not the right word here, but when a special exception goes to the board supervisors and the community is not pleased with that, they have the ability to basically express their opinion at the ballot box because the board supervisors is an elected body, as opposed to special use permits that go to BZA, which of course we all know is a judicial body and is appointed by a judge, and the people do not necessarily have direct, well, they do not have direct input on that. So it was also an issue of legislative version of the judicial, for those that want to kind of look to the constitutional arguments. The resolution passed four to one. Mr. Frazier was the dissenting vote, but Mr. Frazier's concern was whether or not this resolution was out in front of the last item we took up, which was the changes the planning commission had worked on. And now that it looks like there's a possibility of syncing those two documents together, I think, and I cannot speak for Mr. Frazier, but I do know that that was one of his concerns, and I think we, you know, we answer that by looking at these two documents together. So with that, and Mr. Dameron, Mr. Goff put a lot of effort, obviously, into going through the entire Rappahannock County code to make the recommended changes here that would need to be changed to streamline everything, which by the way, a lot of communities do. Not every community, but I think, again, Mr. Dameron, if you want to pine here, I've been told that the majority of communities in the Commonwealth do not have a distinction between special use and special exception. So for many, for a lot of those, for those reasons, you know, the board took all that into consideration and then voted to pass the resolution on to the planning commission for its review, its comments, and its remediation.
Thank you, Mr. Lizinski. Your commentary, Mr. Henry Field, reminded me of two items that I would note related to the resolution. Clearly, the primary purpose of the changes is to deal with this distinction, but there are other items embedded in there. One that struck most clearly to me, given the form of the resolution now, which is a little bit hard to follow because it's all just a description of the changes. One of the changes, as I understand it, would change the way we move forward, any application for a special use, and have us approve or vote on each application before it is posted for a hearing. So I do encourage you to look at the specifics of this resolution before we have an actual public hearing on it, because while it is certainly true that the primary purpose is that distinction, there are some other items embedded in here that shouldn't be overlooked. And related to that point, one of the items in the resolution I think would be very helpful to us as well as to the community, is the idea that there be an actual markup of this document with the changes identified and highlighted so that one doesn't have to, you know, put the puzzle together oneself to find out what's being added. For example, there are a few sections that simply say, you know, to be removed in its entirety. Well, I have not gone back and looked exactly yet at what those items would be. I would do that before we have an actual hearing, but it would certainly be ideal, and I think it's been, and Mr. Dameron's been directed in the resolution itself to have such a markup, and I certainly think we would need to have that distributed in ample time to have a serious conversation about what those changes are. But having looked at it as much as I have, I just want to make those points, there are a couple of other items. And so, Mr. Henry, I'm sorry, back to you.
So, Ms. Mead, you agree, what's your opinion on, is this what you see in a normal course of your job?
We're looking at the same thing now in Falkirk County, or Falkirk County is looking at the same thing, and we have found just much, like you said, the majority of counties do streamline them. With that said, I do think process needs to be paid attention to, and, you know, when is something complete, and just to, again, I've asked for the market version as well, and I think that would allow us to fully understand the impact of those changes.
I guess the one conflict that I see between our document and the supervisors' items that came down and floated to us is that we said 10 acres for better practices for tourist homes and areas, and 20 acres in a conservation zone, and the board version, I think, is two and five.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Henry, yeah, and I apologize because I shouldn't brief that when I gave the background. If you look at page six, there's a note in the margin there that simply says amend lot size, but the board did not necessarily agree with or agree that it needed to be discussed further, and of course, in fact, you know, a lot of this falls in here, was exactly, as Mr. Henry said, a distinction. I don't think the board, because we have this matter about what the board in 2010 did or did not agree to, that's still, I guess, an open issue, and the board supervisors felt that that issue, did it, you know, is it really two and five, or, you know, was that ever embraced, or should it be 10 and 20 as the planning commission has recommended? But that issue, which is 66K4, 170, that's 66K4, could be a big part of the public hearing and what this board discusses, and it's to the heart of the matter of a couple of the comments we heard today in public comment as well. So there's no final recommendation, or some language that's been, you know, inserted in here, it's really, if anything, kind of needs to be agreed to and filled in. Mr. Dameron, can I express that?
Yes.
Is that your understanding? Okay.
So we'll be advertising something, an item that there's two conflicts, it's two different versions of it, but we will be advertising that? That way?
I believe Mr. Goff and I are having a meeting to decide, I'm going to advertise that.
You are, isn't it?
Yes, we are.
So y'all might take the decision that you're going to strike what the planning commission did, or you're going to make a decision to strike what the board supervisors had and go and move on with it?
No, decide how to advertise, so we're going to combine.
I mean, it does seem like a logistical issue, but at a more practical level, it seems that the issue is what should the acre sizes be going forward? I know there is an additional legal question about looking backwards and the status of existing decisions and resolutions. I don't believe that is a matter for us. It seems to me that while it may be a challenge to advertise it, you know, this body has spent a fair amount of time on this, it was not a unanimous decision, as I recall, when we went through it the first time. I think the questions are pretty clear, it's the answers that are a little less clear. So I think if we have this as an item to be discussed and have a hearing on, we should be able to cover the waterfront in terms of what we want it to be going forward.
Well, it seems like one of the reasons I wanted to talk about this, it seems like the advertising part has been one problem, the Rappahannock County government has had a lot of problems with this. So just want to try to have some direction here in compatibility.
Point taken. Mr. Lizinski, you have further comments? Mr. Brown, would you care to weigh in on this matter?
No.
Mr. Bird?
I'd like to.
You'd like to have the maturity, understanding? Mr. Bird?
I think this is an important thing to do, and we're doing it at a kind of critical time. From my experience on the BZA, there are a lot of rather contentious meetings and issues that have been brought before the BZA, and it would seem that the supervisors would provide a more refined venue for these to be discussed. And I think that as a result of this, the only aspect of it that I see questionable is, I would wonder whether the supervisors really wanted to paint themselves into a corner with requirements when they can make each decision on its merits, and they are ultimately the final authority on this.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. So sensing the feeling of the commission, it seems to me we're to a point where it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to ask the zoning administrator to, in coordination with the county attorney, come up with proper language to notice these, both sets of proposed amendments, and schedule a hearing at the time of our next planning commission meeting.
I would say something of time convenience. Maybe, it sounds good right now, but maybe by the time they make all the changes, it may well be a memory. I would say a motion should say appropriate time.
And if we're going to do that, I would say we should also be contingent upon the availability of said markup for our purpose as well as that of the public. So, I don't know, Mr. Henry, would you like to make a motion of that sort of?
I'd make a motion that we recommend that both 1708, oh, excuse me, both the proposed zoning amendments 2017 and proposed zoning amendments May 2017 be set for a public hearing per legal requirements that convenes the staff and county personnel.
There are second ones. Further discussion, Mr. Henry, would you be opposed to referring to the need to have the actual markup language available? Let's modify that. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. I believe that brings us to the two items that we added. Mr. Henry, maybe I'll turn to you for the first one. I believe it was the idea of the proposed BZA appointee to the planning commission.
I think Rappahannock County is very unique in that the way the planning commission is structured with members of the board supervisors and also BZA members that sit on the board at the disposal, I guess, by the appointment of the board supervisors, but I think actually it's a recommendation from the BZA that goes to the board, and then they make a vote on it, and then it comes to us, and we really don't have much say in who sits with us, and this is not, Chris, you're going to want to remember and everything. All the board members, pretty much from the BZA, have served terms on the planning commission, and this is going to sound pretty radical, but I would like to say, I think next year, I would like to put in a request that the BZA consider sending over Dave Conick to sit on the planning commission this year. And this may sound crazy and radical, but a couple times I've asked for Art Goff to come and be part of the planning commission, and one or two members of the board supervisors said no, for whatever reason, so we've been without legal counsel, and I think Dave's back and average is getting better, and I think he adds a lot of legalities that we are sometimes missing that drag things on, and I think, you get him on this side of the table, I think he can be an asset. And it's a little bit radical, but we've gone through a lot of changes in this county, and as Mr. Dameron said, that, you know, we need to draw on some people, and I think we could draw on him on this side of the table. So that's all I have to say. We can think about it for a month, you can laugh at me, whatever, but that's number one.
Number two, you know, we've been dragging on this comprehensive plan for a long, long, long time.
Sorry, Mr. Henry, before we move on to that, and I'm guessing there's not going to be a lot of takers for this, but before we move on to the second one, could I ask if other commissioners would like to have any comment on the first item, since it was, they were separate items on the agenda? Would anyone like to comment on that request? Okay. Sorry. Would anyone like to comment on that request? Okay. Sorry, Al.
Well, secondly, the comprehensive plan's been dragging on for a long time, and I can remember back two or three chairmen ago, when Charles Stricknow was chairman, I brought up to John McCarthy at the time, and Charlie, about, you know, when are we going to get started on the comprehensive plan? And at that time, I said, well, we're waiting for the census data to come. But the census data has come and gone, and it's probably changed somewhat, which will be coming up in a forthcoming year or two years or whatever. And we've put it off, and there's been a lot of changes in the county government administration and in the government itself. And I think we need to bite the bullet and get this behind us, get it done, and try to set a schedule. We tried to set a schedule earlier in 2017, and we picked up some momentum for thirty or sixty days, and then it disappeared. So I think we need to get this done and get it behind us and get back to a normal back to where we can, you know, start achieving some results again.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Before I turn to my other commissioners, I would just note that I know there have been some discussions now that the transition of the zoning administrator is completed. I think we have had, once again, another fairly compelling reason to slow down. I don't think it's a desirable situation. I don't think it's something we want to continue, so I certainly agree with you. I would comment, however, that, and my concern is, you know, we've been through this thing now twice, completely going around the county, talking about it, marking it up, voting on changes. And my understanding from our last set of discussions is that the only thing that was remain to be finished from the point of view of the commission was the updating of the informational sections. And I think there's some questions that remain about what the status of that effort is and how we get that finished. And I understand that there are some conversations taking place with the new, with the new team about how we might accomplish that. Those are, but I agree with you, we need to get this back on, back on track very much. So other comments?
Are rumors that some of the maybe information has been lost or misplaced with the previous county administrator? Is that true?
I'm not aware of where it is, so I'll have to find out. I don't know if it's been misplaced. I haven't seen.
Well, again, with respect to the actual text of the chapters, including the chapter six, which is the one that we have specifically voted as a body to put forward to the Board of Supervisors, the posted draft on board docs, to the best of my knowledge, is the latest working draft of all the other chapters, with the exception of the data tables. So I would just, as we get back into this, I would encourage commissioners and members of the public who have a strong interest in this to, you know, focus on that as the starting or resumption point, if you will, of where we are on this process.
Mr. Chairman, just curious, other board members think about this, and maybe it's just absolutely not a good idea or not the right thing, but the core, I think, the problem with a comprehensive plan as far as getting it done in a timely fashion is lack of staff that we have had or probably still have as it relates to workload on the comprehensive plan. And is there any merit to reaching out to the Rapid County Rapidan Regional Commission for some of the assets that they have in there? In their, you know, they have a, I believe they have a plan.
I have personally delivered information from that body to our county representatives along the course of this process, so I certainly agree with that in principle. I think this gets back to what is the current status of the informational sections of the report.
I was just thinking about a way of how do we accelerate this forward and just get the whole thing done? If we're stumbling as far as whether we have these chapters or even around anymore, or, you know, Mr. Damron, it sounds like you haven't had an opportunity to look at this yet. If there are any resources that, you know, that we belong to, which obviously we do, RRC, you know, I'd be interested in hearing other members on the commission here, if they have a thought as to whether or not that's merit worthy, or if it's, you know, not worth pursuing, or.
It's about certain impact.
Not the planning mission, maybe someone else, maybe for the board supervisor.
Sure. I mean, I think, you know, we're all interested in overcoming whatever obstacles or friction stands between us and finishing this. You know, it's, if you look at the sum total of time that we've spent on this over the past, it's got to be two or three years now, I think. Certainly, it started a year before John McCarthy left. So certainly, we need to keep pushing this thing along. It is a, I think it is a staff resource challenge. Again, my understanding is we were almost there, but for the data tables. Now, most of those tables, you know, the sources were cited, and they were specific sources either from, you know, the various demographic databases, ag department, information, Census Bureau data. So I believe that the task, though it may be fairly involved, is at least in one form fairly clear in that, you know, there's a table, it currently ends in 2004, and there are data available for every two years. We'd like to see six, eight, and ten, and twelve, or whatever interim data exists. So I do think the plot, the path is fairly clear on that item. There may be others, and again, each time, each time there's, you know, more time passes, there's more interest. And I do think every time we go through this, we need to reflect again and take the pulse of the public with respect to the other sections, and I don't mean to diminish that. I just feel like that is pretty clearly where we were when we left off on this process after our working meetings. And that, to me, is certainly unnecessary. It might not be the only thing we have to do, but it is clearly what we have to do. And I agree with you, if there are other resources we can tap to get that done, you know, I think that should be part of this discussion. I don't know if that needs to be a discussion during one of these meetings. Obviously, it involves, it involves others, not just the folks here in Davin. So I'm all for that. Other commissioners have any care to weigh in on that?
I think it would be beneficial to schedule a time just so we can get an update of, is that really where we are and what is left to be done, and then we can look at the schedule or reach out to RRC, or the, does this look a help? You personally have to know where we are.
Good assessment, yes. Mr. Henry?
I think that's wonderful. I'd like to bring up next month, all business will be my recommendation for the BZA, will be all business next month. Give everybody a lot to think about.
Okay. Well, if I'm not mistaken, that concludes the items on our agenda for this evening. Our next scheduled meeting is for October eighteenth, 2017, at seven thirty here, assuming that we proceed in orderly fashion with a notice and comment, we can expect that the public hearing meeting. And with that, I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Okay.
Over, stand up.